To order, I'm going to call to order, September 3rd, 2024, Plan and Development and Building Committee. At this time, I would ask Eddie Crosby to give us a bigger than prayer.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. If you would stand and bow with me if led. Heavenly Father, gracious God, we come before you humbled and grateful for this day that you have made, Lord God. We are thankful and rejoice and are glad in it. Lord, your word tells us and teaches us to number our days, Lord, and give us the wisdom and the courage and discernment to do just that, Lord. We ask for an extra measure of wisdom as well to be poured out on the council and this community, Dorchester County, Lord, to bring you glory and good to our community. Father, we ask that any sin debt that would be, that would impede these prayers, both spoken and unspoken, to reach your ears, Lord. We ask that you would forgive those, not by mere prayer, but by the precious blood of your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I like to thank you, Mr. Crosby, for your prayer.
Yes, ma'am.
So now, we're gonna get started. Oh, Kara, you're already there. Okay, I was gonna get started. We're gonna go with the item. The first item is a public hearing. And so, the public hearing recommendation for second reading regarding rezoning request, number 917, for WIS, how you pronounce that, RIM, to rezone 6.97 acres located at 146 Brown Town Road, near Harleyville, TSM number 016-00-00-025, from Agricultural Residential District, AR, to Commercial Light Industrial District, CLI.
Yes, ma'am. This first rezoning for your consideration.
What? Oh, open for a public hearing. Thank you, Kara.
This first rezoning for your consideration is located on Brown Town, which is out near Harleyville. Brown Town comes off of Seven Mile Road, so it's out near Giant Cement, near Judge Street, just off of I-26. This property is about seven acres in size, and it has been used industrially for a number of years, this property. The whole area was absence of controls for a number of years. It's now the Agricultural Residential District. And they've used it for a number of industrial uses. I think most recently was 2018. They got a special exception for scaffolding business. Right now, they're doing a different type of business. I'm sorry, no, it's still the existing scaffolding business, but they're considered legal non-conforming because the zoning district no longer allows industrial uses by right or even through the special exception process. So when the applicant approached staff about expanding their business on site, we weren't able to assist them getting any permits because that use is legal non-conforming. So because this whole area is predominantly industrial, although there are some residences around, they did apply for a rezoning to go to Commercial Light Industrial, which will make this business conforming and then will allow them to expand on the site. When staff reviewed it, it complies with the Future Land Use Map Recommendation for Employment Mixed Use. It meets all the requirements for the Commercial Light Industrial District. We recommended approval. Planning Commission reviewed it at their June meeting, and they also recommended approval.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? The council?
Ma'am.
Okay, Kara, thank you. I'm gonna ask, yeah. Yeah. At this time, anyone wishing to address the committee, come forward. Please give your name and your address for the record. You have three minutes to speak on this subject. Okay. I close public here. Okay, we're gonna go to the next one. Oh, entertain a motion.
Yes, ma'am. Motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor.
All in favor? Aye. And oppose?
Unanimous.
All right, we'll move on to the second, the second item on our agenda, which is also a public hearing and recommendation for the first reading regarding rezoning request 918 for D.R. Horton Incorporated to rezone a 78-acre portion of a parcel located at Sugar Hill Road, near St. George, TMS number 059-00-00-008, from Agricultural Residential District, AR, to Single Family Residential District, R1. Kara?
Yes, ma'am.
We'll open it for a public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. This rezoning request should be a bit familiar. They came before you all recently. There was an informational session. So just to recap, this is a 78-acre portion of a larger piece of property. So if you looked at the maps in front of you, this tract actually spans across Sugar Hill Road. The northern portion is not included with this rezoning request. We are only looking at the southern portion. And the request is to go from Agricultural Residential, which has a one-acre lot size, to R1, which has about a third of an acre lot size. Sugar Hill Road, again, will also be familiar because you recently approved a rezoning request from AR to R1 for the property almost abutting this one, that's right next to the country club. And so, this is being looked at as an extension of that development. We did do a, an impact analysis when we processed this rezoning. It shows a net positive in loss over the years, just varying year per year. Overall, it's a net positive for the county. It will result, I think, in about 86 homes, is what we had said when we ran the analysis, which results in, I think, about 60 students that build out. And I think their plan was to do a cluster. They had submitted plans when we came before you all for the informational discussion. There were some additional discussions, I believe, after the meeting about some revisions to the plans that they would like to see for the community, some additional buffering. The applicant did go back. They revised the plans. I will caveat that when you approve a rezoning, if that's the action that's taken, it doesn't vest a site plan. So what you're looking at is just for informational, just for discussion, to show that they can meet all these requirements, but not necessarily that this is exactly the way it would be laid out when they went to develop. So that's what we have up here on the screen for you as a result of some of those discussions after that last informational meeting. You can see some additional buffer area. I will also note, because this is a cluster, they are able to stay out of the floodplain. There is a floodplain on this property. That's all gonna be open space, so they were not intending to develop that. Currently, under the AR, they can develop a residential subdivision. They just can't get the smaller lot size like they could with a cluster. And either way, whether they stick with the traditional subdivision under AR, whether they use the cluster under R1, they will have to have water and sewer on the site, in able to be, I'm sorry, in order to be able to do a major subdivision, based on our recent ordinance amendment. When we looked at it as staff, we recommended approval of the R1 rezoning with the condition that they subdivide the property prior to third reading to separate out the 78 acres from the greater tract. Planning Commission, when they reviewed it, they also recommended that same conditional approval.
Say that one more time.
Planning Commission, when they reviewed, also recommended a conditional approval based on the plat.
Based on the plat, okay, that we have to have it for third reading.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Kara. Does anyone here have any questions?
Ms. Anderson, was there an issue, I was trying to pull up my notes on this from previous, about another access point? Was that, I know that was, was that brought up in this particular, was that, or was that on the front half?
No, I think there was some discussion at the last meeting about an access point, but they are showing two different access points on the subdivision plat. And I think they had even showed it last time, but I don't know that it was put up on the screen to look at when we were discussing it. So they do have two proposed access points.
Okay, very cool.
We also brought up about green space here as well.
Yeah, so when you look at the site plan here, there's open space. Are you able to see my cursor when I move it? Okay, so you can see where I'm pointing. So they have some areas of open space that are accessible, accessible by all. And this greater portion over here is retained as open space. It is not required, it is not a wetland up here. This is wetland down here. This is wetland down here, but they are leaving this large area. A lot of it's because it's floodplain. They're staying out of it. But there's, we don't have a prohibition against developing right now within the floodplain.
Okay.
They would just have to meet their elevation requirements, so they are showing that as open space.
So the two open spaces, so show them to me one more time.
So the wetlands are down here, and they're leaving those alone as required. They have this whole large area here, and it connects into the neighborhood, the open space there. There are additional smaller pockets of open space down by this entrance and behind these lots over here, but the greater portion of open space is through here.
And there, these open space areas are not close to the water, run out ponds, are they?
No, stormwater ponds do not count as open space within a cluster. They do not.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Kara. I'll open it. Anyone wishing to address the committee, please come forward at this time, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Barbara Felder, 196 Summers Place. In that area with Debbie, there was a flooding. If we don't clean out our dishes here in South Carolina, we're gonna have floodings. Flooding from topple Sugar Hill Road until beyond Summers Place from Debbie. We had to use Peking Tree Road to get out our community, and this usually happen two or three times a year. And if they are not careful, and then taking out of the trees out of this area, it will be flooding. Also, H.R. Holton Company has been known for the 12 states not building constructed homes. Shabby homes. People are moving out from left to right. We should be careful what we allow our taxpayer to be served within the county. At the last meeting, I presented two of the articles out of five on this company. Not providing good service, good constructed homes to the taxpayer of Dorchester County with high mortgage rates. Please consider or follow, make sure they follow the comprehensive plan for this community and not be a burden on the taxpayer that which we already have in Dorchester County. And for believers and unbelievers, Timothy 6:18 commands them to do good, to be rich in good deeds, and to be generous and willing to share. We need to willing to protect, and I'm an advocate for protecting the taxpayers. I'm not against improvement, but the process that things are going on here in Dorchester County. And y'all love this company. I hope there won't be any backfire from this company. It seems like the taxpayer are being ignored. But we see the handwriting on the wall, and I hope that won't come with being profit over the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Felder. Is anyone else that'd like to come up and speak?
Tommy Fagan, 111 Ponderosa Road, Somerville, South Carolina. Yeah. They were just approved two large ones. Now, the one, if I'm not mistaken, this was part of the larger one that they wanted to do it all at once, but only gave them part of it. But they come back for another bite. They're never happy. You know, this was gonna be kept wetlands and rural, and they were gonna develop the other part of it. But they're already back wanting to develop this. Now, at the informational meeting, he had 86 homes, is what he said they were gonna build. And he said the rest of it was wetlands, or they would build more houses. There wasn't any room for any common space for the residents, football field, a soccer field, even basketball courts. You questioned that, Ms. Holman. Now, they're still wanting 86 homes. Where did they manufacture the other land to put the common areas on? You know, until people knows what's gonna happen with the roads, with the schools, and everything else, maybe we should keep this rule and defer this, kick it down the road a little bit, and let's see what happens in that area when we get all those other big subdivisions in there. You know, there's gonna be traffic, there's gonna be problems, there's gonna be people rubbing on each other, and that ain't gonna work out good. The people that's been here forever just get run over, as usual, like what's going on in Somerville. So please, take a word of caution, maybe kick this down the road, defer it. Find out exactly what they're gonna do before you sign off on it. It'd be nice to know what they're gonna do before you tell them okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Does anyone else want to speak?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Maisella Berry. I live at 608 Sugar Hill Road, St. George. I will not continue to bore you with my concerns in our community on Sugar Hill Road. We've been talking for almost two years now, so I will be brief. I was told by my councilwoman about two years ago that the train was in motion. Now I understand exactly what she meant by that. No matter what we say or do, we'll change the decision that's already been made. I've spoken to several residents on Sugar Hill Road, and their concerns were was privacy, buffers, additional buffers, so that they won't see the construction sites. We're asking for additional buffers so that we will have some privacy in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who want to speak?
Ms. Holman, just a couple of points, just for clarification. This is first reading, so there'll be two additional readings for specifics that you'd like to address. I mean, I know you talked very globally, but the buffer that's included is a 50-foot buffer. What, you know, so that the developers can hear what would be agreeable, right? Bring some specifics possibly, so they could hear, because that's the time for the hearing between now and the final vote. So those are, those are great points that were made. And as far as, you know, kicking the can, so to speak, you know, again, Mr. Fagan, if you were the property owner, right, and you had an opportunity to sell said property, right, if the shoe were on the other foot, right, consider if that were you, potentially, your property and how you'd want that. So we're trying to balance, not gonna get into a back and forth, just want you to consider that because certainly, over the comprehensive plan, Ms. Reinerson and the team do an amazing job taking input for the community, from council, from staff, to do just that. So when it comes before the general public, we have the information before us to make the best decision at hand. However, that's why there are three hearings, so that the community can bring forth their concerns as well to us and to the developer, developers in the room, because I think those are great points. So just wanted to acknowledge those, because it's important, and we appreciate and we hear you, so. Right, understand. Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
A second. We have a vote?
All in favor.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to the next one. On the public hearing, in recommendation for second reading regarding rezoning request, number 923, for, what's her name, Latricia Brakely, to rezone 8.72 acres located at Victor, Victoria Lane, near Somerville, TMS number 143-06-00-052, from Transitional Residential District, TRM, to Single Family Residential Manufacturing Housing District, R-1MA. Kara?
Yes, ma'am. This last rezoning request.
Public hearing, Kara. Public hearing, Carol, please.
Thank you. This last item for your request is a rezoning for an approximately 8.72 acre piece of property. It's located on Victoria Lane, it's undeveloped, it airs property. Ms. Blakely's been working for the better part of 10 years to settle the estate. And they're finally in the final stages, they have a court order to be able to subdivide the property. However, the property used to be DE zoning, which allowed a variety of uses, a variety of lot sizes. Um, when we went through that, and then the E districts went away, it became zoned R4 multifamily. Then we did the R4 rezoning exercise and ended up rezoning this to TRM, which carries a one-acre lot size minimum. Um, this area back here is fairly large lot, single-family residential, it's not major subdivision, it's family subdivisions. They're requesting R1MA, which is a single-family residential zoning district. It carries a half-acre lot size, again, which is in keeping with the vicinity. And there are other properties with that same zoning in the area. This will allow them to execute the plat that has been court ordered for the distribution of the estate. We do support it, it meets with the comprehensive plan, it's in caricature for the area, so staff recommended approval of it. Went to Planning Commission at their July meeting, Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Okay. Do I have any public, thank you, Carol.
Yep.
Um, do I have any public comments? Anyone wanna speak on this? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Let me close public hearing.
Motion to approve.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. At this moment, do I have any other motions?
Motion to adjourn.
I second it. Mean to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Mean to adjourn. I'm taking, I'm just loving this.
At this time, I'd like to call it over to September 3rd, 2024, Dorchester County Council Meeting here in Summer, in St. George, South Carolina. At this time, will you please stand, it's Councilwoman Holman, leaves us an invocation, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, bow heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all here this evening safe and sound, Heavenly Father. And we ask as we adjourn tonight that you do the same for us. We also ask as we are here doing the work of the council, that our job is done well and is well received. Heavenly Father, we ask that you take care of our first responders and our teachers and our principals and superintendents, Heavenly Father. We ask that you put your arms around us and protect us, and may the good that we do be seen to all those others in our district. We ask all of this in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will entertain, entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the August 19th, 2024 County Council Meeting as presented.
So move. Second.
I've got a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I would like to abstain.
We've got six, or five, uh, four, one abstained, and one absent. Next on the agenda, I'd like to recognize at this time, Councilwoman Crosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation, uh, 2414 proclaiming September 2024 National Workforce Development Month in Dorchester County. Whereas Dorchester County is reported as having a labor force of over 84,000 individuals, 10th largest in the state. And whereas the regional workforce snapshot Q2 2024 reports there were 430,698 people employed in the Trident region with an unemployment rate of 3.9%. And whereas challenges for potential workforce are exacerbated by barriers to employment, including transportation, housing, and childcare. And whereas collaboration among the federal, state, and local government leaders, along with state and local education, human service agencies, local businesses, employment service providers, community-based organizations, and workforce development boards must take place to achieve long-term, sustainable, and successful workforce development across traditional, high-needs sectors and emerging industries. And whereas Dorchester County recognizes the importance of workforce development and maintaining economic security, the county urges all job seekers to attend the Dorchester Career Fair on September 18th at Trident Technical College, Dorchester Campus in Oak Brook, uh, Somerville. Now, therefore, Dorchester County Council hereby proclaims the month of September, Worktember, as National Workforce Development Month, and encourages residents to join in recognizing the contributions of the local workforce. And that workforce development plays a crucial role in supporting workers and the growing local economy. Adopted this third day of September 2024 by S. Todd Friedel, Chairman, and attest Tracy L. Langley, Clerk to Council.
So move.
Second.
We got a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's six oh, or six oh vote with one absent. Tonight, it, uh, we got recognized, recognized for the group, we've got Sharon Goss from Workforce Development of, uh, Charleston, Berkeley, Charleston, Dorchester, uh, Council Governments, Wendy Carlson from Regional Director, Robbie Lim, Lead Senior Business Sales Consultant from the South Carolina Department of Employment and Workforce, and Michelle McDonald, Deputy Director of Dorchester County Economic Development. Soon, and soon we'll do all the pictures at one time, we'll bring you up in just a minute for pictures, and we appreciate y'all being here. Next on the agenda, uh, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Holman, Resolution 24-17.
Yes, the State of South Carolina County or Dorchester County Resolution Number 2417. A resolution directing that the Dorchester County Planning Commission to conduct the study related to the impose of a development impact fee applicable within a geographical area or Dorchester School District 4 and associated with the public education facility for grades K through 12, considered necessary for the proper education of the school district children, and recommended a resultant impact fee ordinance related, therefore. Whereas Dorchester County, a body political, politic, and political subdivision of the State of South Carolina, has adopted a comprehensive plan as provided in Chapter 29 of Title VI, South Carolina Code of Laws. And whereas the county finds that the geographical area or Dorchester County comprising Dorchester School District 4 would be experiencing rapid population growth and development in the future. And whereas the county will experience the effects of direct impact of this growth to the public facilities throughout the county and within the areas comprising the district. And the county finds the project population growth requires, requires consideration for an impact fee related to the public education facility within District 4 grades K-12, included but not limited to schools, offices, classrooms, parking areas, playgrounds, gymnasiums, cafeterias, health and music rooms, computers and science laboratories, and other facilities considered necessary for the proper public education of children of the State of South Carolina, including the children within this district. The, um, it is, it is the intent of the council. The commission completes its assigned task with a recommendation to council within eight months of the adoption of the resolution, or as soon thereafter as practicable. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon approval by the council and is not intended to alter or modify, and should not be interpreted, interpreted as alternate or modifying current existing impact fees in associated ordinance, if any. The provision of the resolution are hereby declared to be serviceable, and in any section, phase, or provision shall for any reason be declared by a court to competent jurisdiction to be invalid or unenforceable. That declaration should not affect the vitality of the remainder of the section, phase, and provision hereunder. And a copy of this resolution shall be delivered to the commission and the district upon adoption. Adoption this third day of September 2024, Dorchester County, South Carolina, by S. Todd Friedel, Chair, Chairman, County Council of Dorchester County, South Carolina, attest Tracy L. Langley, Clerk, County Council of Dorchester County, South Carolina. So move.
Second.
We got a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six oh vote, uh, and, and tonight we have Superintendent Mr. Beckwith and Felt Hughes, Chairman of the Board here tonight, reviewing this, we appreciate you coming tonight. Also, I'd like to get the Workforce Development Crew up here so we get the picture taken, and we'll get moving on. Next on the agenda, we had a public hearing and third reading of ordinance number 2420, a 13th supplemental ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of Dorchester County, South Carolina, water and sewer system revenue bonds in the principal amount and not exceeding $144 million. Prescribed the form and details of such bonds and other matters relating thereto. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing, anyone who'll come up and speak, please give your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Tommy Fagan, 111 Pondrosa Road, Somerville, South Carolina. On July 26th, 2024, the county council meeting, first reading was for $182 million. The second reading of that same one, that was 3B on that council meeting. Then the next meeting, it dropped down to 144 million, and there's a third reading tonight. Can you just willy-nilly change numbers, or does that have to take three readings for what is stated on the agenda?
It actually states not to exceed. So it will not exceed 144 million, so it depends on what the bills and stuff come in at.
I'm just saying what's written and what's approved, that's the only question, you know? Little bit of housekeeping.
Yes, so very specifically, the strategy for funding all three phases that have a guaranteed maximum price, as well as contingencies, um, will not exceed 144 million. The actual amount will be they've got common area now, and still got 86 houses, because the rest of it was wetlands out of the guy's own mouth, the whole rest of it was wetlands. So if y'all could keep your eyes on that, you know, D.R. Horton has been in the news pretty regularly, and it's not so nice. I just want counsel to remember the old adage, when you lay down with dogs, you get up with fleas.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for passing the impact fees, the impact fees for the school for District Four, we need District Two. I gave Mr. Crosby and Ms. Holman a sheet that showed the impact fees from Polk County, Florida, and it also encompass EMS, fire, police, roads, all of those things. We're gonna have to have roads to get to these schools, roads are gonna have to be widened or whatever, so that people can, the teachers can get there, but there's a lot more, but thank you for the first step, at least, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next, Ms. Felice Hughes.
Good evening, Chairman Frittle, and members of council, and Mr. Ward. We're about six, a little over six weeks out from the wall that heals, or the Vietnam Wall coming into Dorchester County, so I wanted to give you a very brief update. October the 15th, the wall will come in off of 26, and previously, it was coming into the Walmart Distribution Center, but that's been changed to Sedarium Clayton. So it will come in, and it is gonna be escorted through our county with the Patriot Guard, the state captain has sent out a, a message all through the state for save the date, so we're not sure how many riders will come to protect the veterans and the wall, but we're looking for a few hundred. And also, our sheriff's department is very involved, Mr. Sam Richardson's been leading, and together, they are putting together the route where the truck, when it comes into our county, it will drive through our county, so citizens in the county will be aware of where it's coming, if they wanna stand by the road and look or whatever. And that map is being finalized as we speak, and as soon as that route is finalized, we will get that out to the public, and I'll make sure that each and every one of you get that information. We lucked out, October 16th is the morning when the wall will be actually put up. We lucked out by calling the Citadel back in April, and when asked for some volunteers, we found out the only day they allow their cadets to go into the community and help is called Leadership Day, and it happens to be October the 16th. So we put our request in early, just got confirmation last week, that we've got 40 young cadets coming the morning of the 16th to help us put up the wall. The frame will start, take an hour and a half. The next part is the part that I'm the most excited about. When the panels are brought off the truck, they weigh about 40 pounds each, each panel can have up to 800 names of those killed in Vietnam. These young men will have those panels, they will carry them to the wall. We are reaching out to our 17 Gold Star families in Dorchester County, for their families, if anyone would like to be there, and recently, I had one from my area that I couldn't identify. Ricky Jenkins was at our opening of our new school, I had the man's picture, he was a Jenkins, and I asked Ricky if he knew who it was, and Ricky was laughing and talking at the moment, and when he looked at the picture, he literally took a step backwards, and I saw his face, and I said, Ricky, please tell me you know who that is. He said, that is my uncle Bill. Long story short, his sister's turning 90 this month, she lives in Somerville, but he has a son that never met his dad, living in Chicago, and he's already made arrangements to be here that day, and I'm hopeful that I can be there to see that young man when his father's panel is pulled out, he will have the opportunity to help carry it or walk with it till it's put on the wall. October 17th and 18th are student days, that is our only two school days, and I've already reached out to DD2 and DD, excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was out of time.
I wish I could, I wish you could go longer.
That's okay, I will get all that to you, I wasn't even looking at that clock. But I wanna thank y'all for supporting us, and I do have a poster that I'd love to have a picture of all of you with. Now, if you don't wanna come down now, we can, I can give it to you, Ms. Holman wants you to come down.
Yeah, we can, we can come down.
Do you mind?
No, we can come down for a picture.
Okay, and I am gonna give you an extra poster, if you wanna put one on each service building, appreciate it. She's home, thank you.
Did you wanna be here with them? Are you sure? I'll take them.
Where's, where's?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and Counsel, on this past Friday, staff met with FEMA Public Assistance Joint Preliminary Damage Assessment Team, the meeting went extremely well, with folks represented from finance, public works, and several other departments. They decided they did not need to go into the field to conduct site inspections based upon the documentation that was provided, and they applauded us for the diligence in providing documentation. We will continue to work with FEMA through this process, and hopefully, based upon the information that's been provided, we'll be able to have an additional IA team that will be in the field and ultimately assist us with, with site inspections, and, and with that, we're looking forward to finishing our assessments by Thursday of this week.
At this time, Mr. Jason Russo, Chairman of Dorchester County Accommodations Tax Committee, requests for approval of Accommodations Sales Tax Committee's recommendations for funding allocations for 2023 and 2024.
And Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Russo wasn't able to attend, but Sandy Price, who is also on the committee, is here to present.
I was getting ready to say, you didn't look like Mr. Russo, I'm sorry.
Not looking. So, good morning, Mr. Chairman, County Council, and Mr. Ward, it is my honor to stand in for our Chairman of the A-Tax Committee for Dorchester County. The Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee met on August the 14th at 6:00 p.m. to discuss the grant request for Dorchester County, and the allocation recommendations goes as follows. Dorchester County collected a total of $185,918.89 in accommodations tax for the fiscal year 2023. $25,000 from total collected of accommodations tax goes to the county. 30% of accommodations tax is allocated for advertising and promotion, recommended by county staff. 65% of the accommodations tax is allocated to tourism expenditures, recommended by the committee. Had fund balance carryover from the fiscal year of 2223 was $54,617. So our total amount for distribution was $159,214.28, which is the 65 allowance plus the carryover balance. We received 15 applications requesting funding for the fiscal year 202324. The Audubon, South Carolina requested 4,500, the committee recommends 4,500 for their Firefly Program. The Dorchester Heritage Center requested $9,869 for the Discovery Series, the committee recommends granting the 9,869 amount. The Dorchester Hysterical Historical Society.
Do not do that.
That's a faux boot.
Do not repeat that, no one on this council.
Delete that off the recording, please. Dorchester Historical Society requested $4,000 for advertising and historical marker replacement for the Coger House, the committee recommended $1,000 for advertising, and denied the $3,000 for historical marker, as it does not qualify for funding. Edison Blackwater Boogie requested $12,000 for promotion of the event, the committee recommended $12,000. Public Works Art Center requested $20,000 for advertising, website maintenance and promotion, the committee recommended the $20,000. Sculpture in the South requested $1,000 for advertising brochures, committee recommends $1,000. St. George Rosenwald School requested $1,000 for advertising and promotion of the location, the committee recommends $11,000. South Porch Artists requests $10,000 for advertising and maintenance, the committee recommends $3,500 for advertising and denies the request for $6,500 for maintenance of the property due to being a primary residence. Somerville, Somerville Evening Rotary Club requested $3,000 for the advertising of Oktoberfest, the committee recommended $3,000. Somerville Family YMCA requested $20,963.38 for promoting the Azalea Festival, committee recommends the full amount, $20,963.38. The Somerville Museum requested $17,679, the committee recommend $10,000 for this. Somerville Orchestra requested $45,400 for advertising brochures, the committee recommended $20,000 for this. The Arc of South Carolina requested $2,400 to promote the 25th Annual McElveen Race, the committee recommends $1,200. The Flower Town Players requested $8,500 for advertising brochures, the committee recommends $5,000. Tri-County Chamber requested $10,000 for advertising, the committee and county staff recommends this come from the county's 30%. So the summary of funds, the total was $885,918.89, less all that, we have a balance remaining after all of our recommendations, that will be $36,181.90 that will be carried over. So it is my pleasure to present this on behalf of our Chairman, Jamin Russo. Any questions?
Do we need any action?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a first and second discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just looking at the notes and, and going through a couple of these things, first of all, thank y'all for, for the hard work on this, I noticed that our FYI 21 collections were 91,000, and we have more than doubled that in three years, which I think is pretty phenomenal. Now, we haven't built a lot of new hotels that I'm aware of, so the revenue increase is coming from, I know we've got some RV campgrounds and some other places, is that contributing to that significantly? Okay, well, I mean, that's, that's a significant jump, because it was, wasn't that long ago, this was. and ultimately assist us with site inspections. And with that, we're looking forward to finishing our assessments by Thursday of this week.
At this time, Mr. Jason Russo, Chairman of Dorchester County Accommodations Tax Committee, requests for approval of the Accommodations Sales Tax Committee's recommendations for funding allocations for 2023 and 2024.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Russo wasn't able to attend, but Sandy Price, who is also on the committee, is here to present.
I was getting ready to say you didn't look like Mr. Russo. I'm sorry.
Not looking. So, good morning, Mr. Chairman, County Council, and Mr. Ward. It is my honor to stand in for our Chairman of the A-Tax Committee for Dorchester County. The Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee met on August the fourteenth at 6:00 p.m. to discuss the grant request for Dorchester County. And the allocation recommendations goes as follows. Dorchester County collected a total of $185,918.89 in accommodations tax for the fiscal year 2023. Twenty-five thousand from total collected of accommodations tax goes to the county. Thirty percent of accommodations tax is allocated for advertising and promotion recommended by county staff. Sixty-five percent of the accommodations tax is allocated to tourism expenditures recommended by the committee. Had fund balance carryover from the fiscal year of 2223 was $54,617. So, our total amount for distribution was $159,214.28, which is the sixty-five allowance plus the carryover balance. We received fifteen applications requesting funding for the fiscal year 2023-24. The Audubon, South Carolina requested 4,500. The committee recommends 4,500 for their Firefly program. The Dorchester Heritage Center requested $9,869 for the Discovery Series. The committee recommends granting the 9,869 amount. The Dorchester Historical Society.
Do not do that.
That's a faux boot.
Do not repeat that. No one on this council.
Delete that off the recording, please. Dorchester Historical Society requested $4,000 for advertising and historical marker replacement for the Coger House. The committee recommended $1,000 for advertising and denied the $3,000 for historical marker, as it does not qualify for funding. Etta Stowe Blackwater Boogie requested 12,000 for promotion of the event. The committee recommended 12,000. Public Works Art Center requested $20,000 for advertising, website maintenance, and promotion. The committee recommended the 20,000. Sculpture in the South requested $1,000 for advertising brochures. Committee recommends $1,000. St. George Rosenwald School requested $1,000 for advertising and promotion of the location. The committee recommends 11,000. South Porch Artists requests $10,000 for advertising and maintenance. The committee recommends 3,500 for advertising and denies the request for 6,500 for maintenance of the property due to being a primary residence. Somerville Evening Rotary Club requested 3,000 for the advertising of Oktoberfest. The committee recommended 3,000. Somerville Family YMCA requested $20,963.38 for promoting the Azalea Festival. Committee recommends the full amount, $20,963.38. The Somerville Museum requested $17,679. The committee recommend 10,000 for this. Somerville Orchestra requested 45,400 for advertising brochures. The committee recommended 20,000 for this. The Arc of South Carolina requested 2,400 to promote the 25th Annual McElveen Race. The committee recommends 1,200. The Flower Town Players requested 8,500 for advertising brochures. The committee recommends 5,000. Tri-County Chamber requested 10,000 for advertising. The committee and county staff recommends this come from the county's 30%. So, the summary of funds, the total was $885,918.89 less all that. We have a balance remaining after all of our recommendations that will be $36,181.90 that will be carried over. So, it is my pleasure to present this on behalf of our Chairman, Jaimon Russo. Any questions?
Do we need any action? Make a motion to approve.
Got a first and second discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just looking at the notes and going through a couple of things. First of all, thank you all for the hard work on this. I noticed that our FY21 collections were 91,000, and we have more than doubled that in three years, which I think is pretty phenomenal. Now, we haven't built a lot of new hotels that I'm aware of. So, the revenue increase is coming from, I know we've got some RV campgrounds and some other places. Is that contributing to that significantly? Okay, well, I mean, that's a significant jump because it wasn't that long ago. This was a $60,000 number and now it's 185. So, that's been able to really fund some good programs here.
Mr. Chairman, just Sandy, thank you for being here tonight. Thanks for making the presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else? We got a first and a second. Any discussions over? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six so vote with one absent. Next on the agenda, I'd like to recognize Mr. Denise Christmas, Dorchester County Deputy Administrator and Chief Financial Officer for the recognition of staff for receiving the National Procurement Institute's 2024 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. That's awesome.
Good stuff here. So, good evening, y'all. I'm here to present, and I would like you all to help me present, please. This very prestigious award is such an elite award that only one of forty-nine counties in America has received this award. So, this is, like you said, the National Procurement Institute's, the NPI, 2024 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. And this is only the second time that Dorchester County has received this award. And this award program recognizes organizations that demonstrate commitment to innovation, professionalism, productivity, e-procurement, and leadership attributes. So, this is the first time that the county has received this award under the leadership of Ms. Rebecca Dantzler, our procurement manager, agent. And I would like for her and her staff to please come forward to receive this award. We also have with us Ms. Jennifer Hilton from our procurement department. And yes, I would like to definitely give them a round of applause. Thank you, ladies. Thank you so much. Here's the certificate. And Ms. Dantzler actually received the trophy just in time for our meeting, so. Thank you. Could we get a picture, please?
You've got to hurry up here, right? That's purpose. Give you some to hold, so that you can hold that. So, I want to be able to see that. Right. Just want to cover up the cool, the cool stuff. So, please, so you can put your hand up.
Congratulations. Thank you. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
If I'm not mistaken, is that not at least the second or third national award the staff's won in the last month? Second, I mean, that's pretty awesome if you think about it for audit, for procurement. I mean, it goes to show the transparency that's happening within the county that's being recognized nationally, that the business side of the county is doing an awesome job. Now, by the way, let's go ahead and recognize Ms. Denise Christmas again, the CFO, as her presentation of the monthly budgets and capital report.
Hello, again. So, here is our monthly report for July. And as you know, the July report is probably the most indefinite report of the year, seeing as our quarterly state aid and our real property taxes are not collected yet. So, this will be a little skimpy here. So, general fund for July, our revenues are at 1.7%. We've collected $1.6 million, and our expenditures are at 4.2% at 3.8 million. The library funds revenues are 0.2%, and their expenditures are 4%. They've collected $14,347, and their expenditures are 238,000. Our capital fund, our revenues there are 0.8% at 51,725, and our expenditures are at 4.2% at 269,783. Our FIRE fund, their revenues are at 0.1% at 16,816, and their expenditures are 2.4% at 283,345. Moving on to our enterprise funds, the Water and Sewer Fund for July had revenue collections of $1,793,315, which is 3.6%. And their expenses are $849,481 at 1.7%. The impact fee fund for Water and Sewer had collections of 4.2% at $1,428,644, and expenses at only 0.1% at 37,188. The Stormwater Fund had revenue collections of 2% at 110,883, and expenses at 4.6% at 251,536. The Solid Wastes Fund had revenue collections of 41,742 and expenses of 119,133. Our ARPA update for July, our expenditures to date are $22,353,575 of our obligations of $33,287,357. So, we have a balance of $10.9 million roughly. And that's 67.2% is what we have spent to date. You'll see in your packets a list of the projects, and beside each project, what has been completed and what is still left to be completed. And as you know, we have to obligate, commit, procure, or encumber these funds by December 31st of this year. Are there any questions?
Ms. Christmas, just highlight the 8.5 million for broadband reach certainly in the western end of the county. If you have the specifics on that, or Mr. Ward, that would be outstanding for, you know, just for the public to hear. Hopefully, those of you in the western end of the county have and are seeing the benefits of these investments to improve broadband for the community.
Mr. Ward, do you have any specifics on that?
Yeah, so I will identify two things. First, I'll start with, we partnered with two firms, Home Telecom and PRTC. And they actually matched that funding. So, substantially, we had $17 million invested with our eight and a half and eight and a half million dollars in private investment. The areas that were identified were then presented to the Office of ORS with the state. And those areas were identified based upon surveys. Do you need internet? Which is kind of interesting because we have public meetings. And how do you get people to public meetings if they don't have internet? And so, you know, you advertise in the newspaper. We put out press releases, et cetera. Obviously, PRTC and Home Telecom did as well. We went to specific areas, and so there were a lot of questions. Councilman Crosby about what those areas would be. So, we identified areas where there was no service. Places like Caltells, areas outside of Harleyville. But interestingly enough, areas in Ridgeville and actually areas, really, it's kind of south of Somerville. So, even though it's a number of areas in the western county, there are several other areas that were identified as well, Dorchester. And we have a map that shows those specific areas, but it's, again, kind of split between those two entities.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. I just wanted to highlight that because of the work, outstanding work that you guys have done on that to just improve the service for our citizens. So, outstanding, and I can say personally, I've dropped less calls coming to and from St. George's and Somerville. So, it's working. So, thank you for all your hard work on that and to our partners as well.
So, Mr. Chairman, since Mr. Crosby drops less calls, that means more meetings in St. George.
We'll zoom those. Better service.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Jordan Baker, Capital Projects Manager.
Hello, good evening. So, we are doing a report from July, and it is now September. So, forgive me if I am a little ad hoc with how I paraphrase some of these things on this report. So, Ashley River Park, that was underwater until, what was that, maybe early last week or so? So, we were completely finished with all of the new shelter and everything out there. And then after we had the flooding, we have to go out there and probably clean some things up. Still, the contractor is going to come back out and finish some minor punch list items, but nothing major there. On Ashley River Library, that continues to stay on the report only because there are a few outstanding items with the contractor that were delayed once we had the storm. We had to reschedule that. They have completed almost all items. So, this should be off of the next report. It was just a few doors that had to be installed. On Etta Stowe Lakes, we actually, Austin and I met with Stantec last week to go through our initial comments of their, the conceptual designs they presented back to us in, I think it was during the winter. And we are going to review those internally with admin and then bring those to council to give feedback on that. So, we're moving along there. And on HHS, that is moving along. We had some damage during the storm. We had the roof leaked. The roof is something that we spent a substantial amount of money on, but we certainly could not replace the entire roof on that huge building. So, I'm glad that the rain actually caused us to see where we had a few more problem areas to get those fixed now before our agencies go in there. So, it didn't cause any major delays. We had our first punch walk last week of the public defender area, and we'll continue on mid-September. We'll have the punch walk of the outstanding areas of the building. So, we are on schedule. Jedburg Fire Station, we're still working to identify a suitable parcel for the station. Right now, we're looking in the area surrounding Jedburg Baptist Church. On the LEC renovation, I actually have, that's on track still. I am going to be installing, not me personally, my vendor will be installing all of the FFNE next week. Then after that, I'll do final walkthrough. They'll move in. I'll start moving all those trailers out, and we are making progress there. Five Hundred North Main Street, that is, we meet on that weekly. That's been going great. I think that we've really fine-tuned the programming on that in terms of the overall design. I know that you all were presented with some initial design ideas, I think, at the last council meeting. So, we are going to go through comments received on that and have an additional meeting with the design team. On the Coroner's Office, that is a proposal I will hopefully have signed this week now because we actually received a discount through the JOC program. If I kind of went through the process there, but anyways, we are going to get reduced pricing to help us meet our budgetary goal on that project. So, on the TIF, on the sports complex, there are, we actually met with Army Corps, I believe, last week to go through some issues we're having with the restricted covenant, which I outlined in the report. But they are working internally on their side to help us push that along a little further. They believe that they can work their magic on their side to help us get past that hurdle with the restricted covenant, since we could not find anything on it. And we will move along accordingly. And we are still working with the Y to finalize the project schedule based on their programming needs. Pantrace, surprisingly, no major damage out there during the storm. I really was anticipating a lot of tree damage, and we got lucky there. So, we're still on track. I haven't had any major delays there beyond the storm we had over the summer where we had a good bit of tree damage. Then they're going to go through, start cleaning that up. Ridgeville Library, I am actually moving along there as well. We are doing, well, I have completed the asbestos and geotechnical survey of the town hall. And then we're going to be completing a 3D scan to try to get an idea of the basic floor plan to start working with, you know, the library staff and with our design team, which is MPS, to start going through initial concepts on that project. On the MUSC project, that is also, it's been going really well. Great team. MUSC has been great to work with on that. And we have finally gotten down to a point where I think that we are getting a lot more comfortable with the budget on that project. So, I think that we are on track and on timeline for, I think that we needed to be finalized with our contract by September. So, coming up. On the Veterans Facility, I actually received the final design proposal for signature today. I started going through that, so we'll have that signed this week and start moving forward into the design process. On Summers Corner, I've requested a meeting with Lennar to start finalizing any final design items they'd like to see and move forward that project. We need to get moving relatively quickly on that to also receive a discount through the JOC program. On the Somerville Library, we are still working to identify a parcel. I believe we're still looking in the Gum Street area, and I don't have an additional update on that at this time. And on Swan Drive, which should have been the easiest project, has been the most difficult project because it is constantly flooded anytime it rains. During the storm, there were actually fish in the parking lot. So, I went out there and took some videos of that. But I think that they are essentially dried out now and moving along. So, I don't know, I haven't received an updated project schedule yet, but we should still be relatively on track, I'd say, probably delayed by an additional two weeks. So, any questions?
Hey, Jordan, thanks for all the hard work. A couple of concerns that I've got that I talked to Mr. Ward about last week, but I just want to voice them. That Summers Corner Fire Station, they're ready for that out there. So, whatever we've got to do to put pressure on Lennar, that station needs to get moving.
Okay, and there is a lot of permitting required on that project, too. So, I do want to make sure that we kind of keep that in mind in terms of timeline and realistic goals in that sense. So, just letting you know that we're working on that, and that'll have to be something they push once we get Lennar to give us what we need, so.
We got any kind of timeline on what Lennar is giving us for what they're going to turn around for their feedback?
I have asked them as late as this afternoon for an additional meeting, so I'm waiting on them to respond.
Okay, and then the other thing, too, the Loblawley Shelter looks great, but around it needs to be sodded because it's pretty rough.
Right, that's part of the punch list items we couldn't do whenever it rained. So, we're going to go back through once everything's all dried out, so I can give them a final list.
And we're going to do something to hide that power box that's out there a little bit?
The one that has the signage in front of it. That's essentially, that was most of our workaround there. But I mean, I'll ask them if there's anything else aesthetic wise they could do with that. But I don't think there were many options beyond Austin trying to put a sign there to cover it up.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Next, we got Mr. Jason Caraher, Director of Public Works.
Good afternoon. The first project, the bridge replacement design build prep, we're going to start pushing out notifications for the public meetings for those projects here in the next couple of weeks, actually. So, later on in the fall, we'll start having those public meetings. First Bend and Rice Mill, we just received notification from SCORE that we did not get funding for that. So, that was a, that was a big bummer. But we're going to keep trying to get some additional funding from other sources for those projects. Maple Street widening, the drainage work continues. Tropical storm put a, put a big hurt on that project. There's a lot of cleanup. That was a result of all that rain. The worst thing you have on a construction site is a bunch of rain, and we had a bunch. So, they're still doing a lot of the cleanup for that. We're still pushing them to open that Richardson and Maple Street intersection as soon as possible. And hopefully, next meeting, I'll have a better update for you for that. Sawmill Branch Trail Extension, we've actually come to a solution to avoid the forest main. That was a big hurdle for that project right now. We're going to do a retaining wall and box culvert combination, so we don't have impacts to the forest mains. We're proceeding with that. We're actually going to put that into our H&amp;H model, so we can measure what impacts that will have. And if it shows that it doesn't have any major impacts, then we'll move forward with that design. Twenty-seven widening, it's just a paperwork exercise at this point. We're waiting on final approval from the EDA. Federal dollars involved, so we have to get the EDA to sign off on the, on the bid package. While we're doing that, we're working on some paperwork internally, bid packages, de-hack permitting, that sort of things. We hope to put that out for bid here in the next probably month, month or two. And then Spring Road, the AT&amp;T strike is causing major delays for this. We have to get AT&amp;T out of the way before we can start the major construction. And that has pretty much come to a complete halt because of the strike. So, once we can get past that, then we'll move forward pretty quickly through construction. With that, I'd be more happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. Mr. Caraher. So, going back to the Sawmill Branch Trail Extension, with coming up with some solutions on the box culvert, what does that look like for a timeline? I mean, how's that affect? And how's that affecting us with permitting and getting that project started?
Well, the duration of the, of the modeling, the permitting, well, this will remain the same. We're still looking at probably 12 to 18 months for that. The, the better the model looks, the better or the faster the Corps will approve it. So, you know, a lot of those, a lot of that duration is going to be known once we get that preliminary, preliminary model done and we see what the true impacts are. Because we don't want to offset the mitigation efforts that were done as a part of Berlin Myers Phase Three. So that's what we're working through right now. So we're still anticipating a 12 to 18 month review time with the Corps.
Review time?
Well, permit time.
It's going to take them 12 or 18 months just to review what we're turning in?
To get it permitted, reviewing permitting.
And then once that happens, construction's not overly difficult?
Construction should be pretty straightforward, which that's where they usually jinx projects, but it's an asphalt path with a couple of box culverts. So that should move pretty quickly.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your hard work.
Mr. Caraher, if I may, thank you, Mr. Byers. Just a reminder for folks where they can access the updates in real time that the county provides that service.
DorchesterTransportation.com. I will forewarn you, they put a picture of me on the website, so you're going to have to, you're going to have to wait for that to scroll by before you start looking at the info. But yeah, it's a great source of info. The packet that you get every, every month with the updates, that's where it comes from. So yeah, please visit the site and it'll answer a lot of the questions you have.
Yep. Thank you. Just to reiterate that, because I direct folks there weekly. So it is a great resource. Just wanted to mention that in the public comments. So, you know, thank you.
And we also have a address, transportation@dorchestercountysc.gov where you can email, ask questions, and that's monitored daily. So we'll respond to that as well.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next, Mr. Larry Harper, Director of Water and Sewer.
Well, good evening, council.
Good evening.
September 3, 1783, City of Paris, France. Benjamin Franklin, John Jay, and John Adams signed the Treaty of Paris, which actually ended the American Revolutionary War for a peace treaty with England. Actually established the border of the United States to be as south of Canada, north of Florida, and east of the Mississippi River. So this is actually the day that the country actually really started with a peace treaty. Second phase of Stratton Capers, Barret Street, we've actually resolved the encroachment permit issue that we were having. We're actually getting ready to put that project out to bid. We finally broke the problem with that one. For the regional water interconnection, phases one and two, we're waiting on the revised 60% plans. We've got Eastman Acquisition Edgement contracted and beginning to work. So you may be getting a few phone calls as they are making progress going down Campbell Thicket and one, and actually US 78. Harleyville Pump Station enforcing a reversal. That's actually, design is in progress. Highway 1526 interchange design. We're waiting for the 30% plans for, from our engineer. The water line for Highway 178, we've got that progress, design in progress. The lower waste water treatment plan expansion to 16. Massive concrete pours have been occurring out there. You might have gotten a couple of phone calls with the pouring concrete at 1 o'clock in the morning. They had to do that because of the time and trying to beat the heat. So just in case if you got the calls, that will be going on for probably another three weeks before we stop the massive pours. For the Maple Street relocation, the contractor is working to schedule testing for the gravity line along Highway 78. And it requires road crossings to Nixon are being reviewed because the contractor found some utilities that were in conflict and they're trying to resolve that. For the PK and Tree Site Extension, we're waiting on the railroad permits and the construction permits. As we all know, the railroad is a government unto themselves. If they think they can control time, you know what our problem is being. Papa Grove to Red Top Engineering, we've actually had a bid opening on that project that we'd like to report on August 24th. Three bids we received, our Schmore was the apparent little bidder of $3,983,513. And we're currently reviewing all of those bids. For Pump Station 72 Upgrade at Ashley Ridge High School, we've got a generator supply port and we're actually working on pouring the electrical building slab. Moving to Pump Station 10 Influenced Rehabilitation, we've got our inspection data and we've actually identified several projects that have to come out of that, especially with the rain that we had recently. Those became more apparent, that's got to be resolved. For Pump Station 20 Enforce Main Reader's diversion, that project is tentatively scheduled to be advertised early this month. Matter of fact, I think it's the middle of the month. And we hope to have all our bids received by early October. For the Ritz Rio Water Line Upgrades, a project is still under design. We've hit the 60% milestone on that, looking to try to get that bid out before the end of this year. For the Shady Grove 178 Area Pump Station Force Main, we are working with our engineer for project design and we're trying, and county attorneys currently are recording deeds for that particular project. Sweepfire Subdivision Extension, we've got that encroachment permit to resolve. The water line replacement in Pepper Ridge Area, we've got that project under design now. And for the water main extension to the Career and Technical Center and for the Harleyville Middle School, we're trying to resolve some issues with the meter station. That's actually with our friends with Lake Marion Water Agency, they need to have some additional input. But we're actually putting that project out to bid in the next two weeks. So water's coming down Schoolhouse Road. And for the Winnewood Reach, the tank contractor has finally received water for testing that tank. We're thankful for that. And the contractor Reach has exit passed all pressure testing, but we haven't got a permit to operate just yet. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Thanks, sir.
You're more than welcome.
At this time, I'd like to recognize County Administrator, Mr. Jason Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Council, I have a few items for your consideration. The first is a request for approval of the 2024 carryover budget. I request county council's approval as presented unless you have any questions.
Submove.
Second.
Got a first and a second discussion? All in favor? Six oh vote, one absent?
Next item for your consideration is a request for approval of the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget calendar. I will ask council to take special note of the following dates of budget retreats to be held in 2025, April 10th, May 1st, and June 5th. Ask for your adoption as presented.
Submove. Second.
I got a first and a second discussion? All in favor? Six oh, one absent vote?
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of the road maintenance acceptance application for Reminis subdivision Phase Four and Phase 5B as recommended by the Public Works Director to begin the maintenance warranty period. Ask for your approval.
Submove. Second.
Got a first and a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Six oh vote with one absent. Next on the agenda, I'd like to recognize Councilman Holman on the Planning, Development, and Building Committee meeting that happened this afternoon.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This evening at 5:30, the Planning, Development, and Building Committee held its meeting. If it is, if it pleased the council, I would like to bring all three motions before council for approval, which were all approved unanimously at 5:30. All right. So the first item we brought was public hearing and recommendation for second reading regarding rezoning request number 917 for West Ram to rezon 6.97 acres located at 146 Brown Town Road near Harleyville. TMS number 016-00-00-025 from Agricultural Residential District AR to Commercial Light Industrial District CLI. The second one was public hearing and recommendation for first reading regarding rezoning request number 918 for D.R. Harton Incorporated to rezon a 78 acre portion of a parcel located at Sugar Hill Road near St. George. TMS number 059-00-00-008 from Agricultural Residential District AR to Single Family Residential District R1. The next one was public hearing and recommendation for second reading regarding rezoning request number 923 for Letitia Berkeley, I think it's Bakely, Blakely, Blakely, to rezon 8.72 acre located at Victoria Lane near Somerville. TMS number 143-06-00-052 from Transitional Residential District TRM to Single Family Residential Manufacturing Housing District R-1MA.
You've heard the recommendation of the committee? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six oh vote? At this time, do we have any appointments for any boards or commissions? Next on the agenda, I'd like to recognize County Attorney, Mr. John Frampton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item I have for council's consideration is authorization for the county administrator to execute a water supply agreement between Dorchester County and the town of St. George. I would request authorization for him to sign that agreement.
Submove.
Second.
Got a first and a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six oh vote?
Lastly, Mr. Shanwin, I would request that council go into executive session to receive legal advice and discuss a contractual matter regarding the potential purchase of real estate.
Second.
Got a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six oh vote with one absent. At this time, we're in executive session. I'd like to thank those who attended the meeting tonight. And if you plan on leaving, please drive. please drive.[500.31]